Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for March 18th, 2019. May I have a roll call, please? Alderman Ashauer?
Here.
Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Bavir?
Here.
Alderman Davalos?
Here.
Alderman Goodman?
Here.
Alderman Hoffman?
Here.
Alderman Widener?
Here.
Alderman Wilson?
Here.
Thank you, Emily. Would you please stand as your Abo and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance issued by the United States of America and the Republic for which stands one nation under God, in the God who created us, with no reason to change. And justice for all. Okay, this is the time in every meeting that we set aside for citizens' comments. We have three folks who have signed up this evening, so please come to the podium and identify yourself by name and address. We'll start with Sheila Rutledge. Welcome, Sheila.
In case anybody didn't hear me, thank you, Mayor, for giving me this opportunity. And Aldermen and city employees, I appreciate the couple of minutes you're going to give me here. My name is Sheila Rutledge, and I was honored to be elected last November to the DuPage County Board. So I represent District Six, which is all of Warrenville. And really, my only comments are to tell you what a wonderful community Warrenville is. I was fortunate to live here for 26 years until last year, and I ran a business here. So some of you have been my clients, some of you have been friends. And I'm just here tonight to let you know that my goal as a county board member is to be accountable and accessible. You'll see me here, oh, probably a couple of times a year. I want to make sure that people know that I'm out there representing this community. And if you have any questions or concerns that you see with the county, or if you have any constituents that are struggling that may use county services to get through their rough patches, please let me know, and I'll be able to do whatever I can to help you. I sit on the, oh goodness, Finance, Animal Services, now I'm gonna blank here, Development, Community Development, which I will begin to chair next month. I know there's one more in there, so, but we're all helpers there, so if there's ever any issue that we can help you at the county level with, please reach out to me. I did give Emily cards for all of you that gives you my contact information. It's not a county phone number that's on that card, it is my direct cellphone number. And anytime that you want to call me with any concerns, I'd be happy to take that call. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Sheila. Congratulations. Pat O'Connor?
My last name is O'Connor. I am here for the new sign I hear. I love it, that. That is so cool. I am not from here. I grew up in Saint Chao, and I used to go down, down away, and, okay, Warrenville, where is it at? I never heard that town. Now I do. I love it. And I have a good, a good idea. I didn't, I know, I know we don't have the money now, but we got the money married down the way, put it one, and, uh, put it for a wall by, by, um, Saint Irene, and go all the way down, and go around, put like, like, almost to like, I don't know how to do, almost to the end, and say, like, the sign say, we went into Warrenville, and people come in off, okay, off, put it shit into, into, put it for a wall, you know, thing, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Bob Seibert?
The economic basis for the property tax system assumes that all individual property owners are paying their share for a public service. But what occurs in TIF III and TIF IV? The hundreds of new property owners do not pay their fair share for fire protection to the Warrenville Fire District. Instead, the City of Warrenville takes these funds. But the Warrenville Fire District needs these funds to serve the hundreds of new residents that will come. The Warrenville Fire District is therefore forced to raise taxes since it needs these additional funds, and we certainly support this tax request. But now, the residents outside TIF III and TIF IV will pay for the new citizens' fire protection for the next 20 years. But there is a solution. The City of Warrenville has identified the following new revenue sources from TIF III and TIF IV. State revenue from the residences, state income tax, the rebate, sales tax from the new residents, home rule sales tax from the new residents, utility taxes from the new residents, all going into the general fund in new revenue. Therefore, I suggest that the City of Warrenville abate the dollar amount that the city is taking from the Warrenville Fire District and yield this to the citizens. It should always be noted that people outside TIF III and TIF IV should not be forced to pay for the fire protection of the new residents.
Thank you, Bob. We'll move on to official and staff comments, beginning with the Mayor. Just one thing this evening, we have a job opportunity at the City of Warrenville in the Public Works Department for a seasonal laborer. You can apply online at wwwwarrenville-il.us or stop by City Hall for an application. Either one of those things works. Public Works seasonal labor opening. If you're interested, let us know. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Warrenville &amp; Bloom is holding a special meeting tomorrow night at the library, starting at 6:30, to let everybody know what we're about and what our plans are for the future and what we're going to do this year. Our big thing is, we are going to, the city, as a city, is going to enter the National Contest of America in Bloom, so we have to, our theme is, here come the judges. And so we've got lots to do, and if you, we all can use volunteers and as many hands as possible, so if you've got some time tomorrow night, we'll let you know what you can be involved in. It'll be a couple of hours of weeding, or a couple of hours of planting things. Many, many hands make light work, so I hope you can join us. Thanks.
Thank you, Emily. And a fine group to have fun with while you're working, I might add. Get a little dirt on your fingernails. Treasurer?
Nothing to add tonight.
Thank you. Alderman? Alderman Goodman?
Yeah, the League of Women Voters is hosting a candidate's forum on Wednesday night here in the chambers of City Hall for all of the people who are up for our municipal elections on April 2nd. There's going to be a meet and greet with people who are candidates for Alderman, Library, Park District?
School District.
And School District, yes, I think that's correct. And then a candidate forum, starting at 7 o'clock, with just the Aldermanic candidates, I believe. So I hope you can make it, and everyone, please remember to vote April 2nd.
Thank you. Okay, City Administrator?
Thank you. We had the Budget Workshop this past Saturday morning with the council, and I want to remind every, all the elected officials, if they still have questions about the budget, the Finance Director and I will have time to set aside to meet with them. We do have one meeting scheduled later for this week, but in the next, this week or next week, if you're interested in getting more questions, detailed questions you didn't want to ask, or you thought of on your way home or something, let me know. Also, please feel free to ask questions about the budget tonight. I announced a couple of times it would be on every agenda going forward, and I forgot to put it on tonight's agenda, so just want to make sure you know this is a nonapproval item, so we can, if anyone has any questions now or anytime during the meeting about the budget, please let me know, or feel free to ask, we'll get you the answers as soon as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And City Attorney?
No report this evening.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on then to the approval of the agenda for this evening. Alderman Widener?
I move to approve the agenda for the March 18th, 2019 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second.
Motion, a second. Alderman Hoffman?
I'd like to take off 6F and 6G.
F and G? And Secander?
Agree.
Okay. We then have a modified agenda for this evening for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The agenda as amended is approved. A couple of sets of minutes that need approval also. Alderman Widener?
I move to approve the minutes of the March 4th, 2019 City Council Regular Meeting and to approve the minutes of the March 11th, 2019 Community Development Committee of the Hall Regular Meeting.
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson. Any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The consent agenda as amended for this evening. Item 6A, accept senior civil engineer Hawking's recommendation, waive second reading, pass ordinance 02019-08 approving a plat of easement for the Stafford Place subdivision. B, accept staff recommendation, waive second reading, and pass ordinance 02019-09 adopting a revised 2019-2020 zoning map for the City of Warrenville. C, accept zoning Board of Appeals recommendation, waive second reading, and pass ordinance 02019-10 approving a variation from the City of Warrenville zoning ordinance for reduced building setback at 1 South 721 Illinois Route 59. D, accept staff, excuse me, recommendation, and pass ordinance R2019-09 authorizing and reapproving the conveyance of the property commonly known as Plum Path Park to the Warrenville Park District. E, accept staff recommendation and pass resolution R2019-10 approving the bid for the mowing and landscaping of city-owned sites to WA Management Incorporated of West Chicago, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed $44,094.30. H, accept community development committee recommendation and adapt the safety committee's policy to be effective immediately. I, accept community development committee recommendation and adapt the community electronic sign policy to be effective immediately. J, receive and file minutes of the Bicycleist and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, regular meeting held on February 12th, 2019. K, receive and file draft minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals, regular meeting of March 7th, 2019. L, receive and file reports of invoices paid up to March 13th, 2019, in the amount of M, authorize expenditure for invoices due on or before April 1st, 2019, in the amount of $274,438.68. And N, receive and file report of debit card expenditures for the month of February 2019 in the amount of $7,560.32. Alderman Widener?
I move to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Brummel.
Second.
Motion, a second. May I have a roll call, please? Alderman Hoffman?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. We'll return to Item 6F. Would someone like to make that motion? Alderman Widener?
I move to accept the Community Development Committee recommendation and direct the City Attorney to prepare an ordinance to approve the redevelopment agreement between the City of Warrenville and Lexington Trace LLC.
Second.
Second by Alderman Davalos. Discussion, Alderman Hoffman?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, could Director Metzer please explain that, the TIF increment on that particular agreement?
Right now, the properties that are involved in the project and really make up the project site together have an assessed value of just over $100,000 and generate about $8,000 to $9,000 worth of property tax each year. Assuming the project's built as it's currently proposed, using today's tax rates, it's projected that the project will generate approximately $936,000 worth of new property tax revenue on an annual basis during the life of the TIF district. That increase in property tax revenue would go into the city's TIF allocation account as TIF revenue.
Now, that's basically because it's so high, is because you're pretty much going to get all the taxes off that, considering that the EAV was frozen at vacant property, right? Correct?
I think a big, well, not a big part, whenever you develop vacant property, and now you have a lot of building improvements, of course, there's going to be a lot more tax revenues that are generated, but in this case, a big portion of the property has an agricultural assessment, so it's paying very little taxes for the amount of acreages that is involved.
Yeah, see, that's, that's the reason why I say that residential should be included in TIF districts for one simple reason is, excuse me, the city will be getting a lot of money off that project. That's just one project in the TIF zone. That sounds good, but that leaves all the other taxing bodies hanging on it. There'll be kids going into school off that project that the schools won't be getting funded. I take that back, they'll get up to 25%, but you know what? If the schools can operate on 25%, they can certainly be welcome to lower my property, my property taxes as far as the school district, 75%. The fire department's not going to be getting any funding. Library's not going to be getting any, a little bit. Park District won't. They'll be sending the kids to homeschool in that, or Park District. This is how these TIFs affect our taxes. That's why our taxes are high, and our, it's just a slow gradual drain on the taxpayer. These TIFs are great for government, they're great for developers, and not so great for the tax, taxpayer. I voted consistently against these TIFs all along since I've been in office. I'm not against housing. I think it should be done in the right areas. These TIFs are, you know, the city's digging themselves a deep, deep hole with these TIFs, and it's up to the taxpayer if they want to lay it or not. They're not a good deal for the taxpayer. Thank you.
Alderman Widener?
Yeah, I'd just like to remind the council and people that Cantera was, again, one of the most successful TIFs in the state, and, you know, it certainly had its detractors when it was initiated, but the fire department ended up benefiting, and many other agencies benefited from that development, and they continue to benefit from the development. So there may be some temporary holes in the ground, so to speak, but overall, when it is said and done, the whole community will benefit from such a development. Thank you.
Alderman Davalos?
Yeah, I would just like to build on that for a minute, and if my recollections are not right, I'm sure there's somebody on staff that can correct, but all the taxing districts benefited from TIF I and II. We're sitting in a building that was built from those revenues. We have a library that's gorgeous, we have an expanded Public Works facility, we have a Park District that was able to increase, we have money that was, in fact, several hundred thousand dollars were given to the school district for technology, I think, a very large fire vehicle, the ones that deal with tall buildings, because that is what the fire department had to deal with when Cantera was built. There was a lot of money going out to taxing districts. The taxpayers were paying the same amount of taxes. Whether the money goes to the taxing districts or the TIF, the taxpayer is not affected. I watch my taxes carefully, and they pretty much were what I expected them to be all through, I mean, I wasn't in a TIF, I was when I lived in the middle of town, but these taxing districts benefit, and when the TIF is over, they really benefit. And if that wasn't true, we would see them at these meetings, at, at Committee of the Hall meetings, at TIF meetings, they are represented on a, on a TIF board, we have a TIF III committee, we have a TIF IV, and they are all represented, and you don't see them here, because they are quite well aware, there's not, over 900 TIFs in Illinois now. And they know the benefit that's going to happen to them, and no taxpayer is paying any more money, it's just going in a different place. It's, 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 the increment from the frozen level is going in a different place. So I guess I just want to build on, on what Alderman Widener said, that there are benefits and that, to, to the taxing districts, and then in the end, we get, we didn't have to ask the taxpayers for extra money to build all these buildings in our civic center and to do a lot of other things. So I just need to make sure that information's out there as people are thinking about this, because there's just a lot of information that isn't quite correct out there, and people are forgetting, you know, why we do TIFs and why they are successful, and can we get in trouble? Absolutely. But that's not how we do our TIFs. We are really good at TIFs, we have TIF attorneys, we have TIF consultants, we've had one of the most successful TIFs ever in TIF I down in Cantera. So this isn't the first time we've dealt with TIFs. And if you come and you listen to meeting after meeting, this is very well planned and organized, and we are not putting taxpayer dollars at risk, so I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Alderman Widener?
I just have an additional, too. As far as our taxes, our property taxes being high, the, if I were to have one property tax dollar in front of me, the rate that a citizen pays to the City of Warrenville is about seven cents or 7% of that tax dollar. 66 cents or 66% of that property tax dollars is going to the school district, and approximately 3% is being given to the forest preserves. So it's really a misnomer to classify the taxes in Warrenville as being extremely high when you break out the property tax dollars and see it going to all these other agencies and government operations. Thank you.
Alderman Berry?
One of the things that came from the TIFs in TIF I and TIF II was the fact that we have a road repair program, a street program. We developed that because of the money that came from TIF I and TIF II, and the, the streets that we have in our town are paved, and we have curbs, and we have gutters, and in many locations, we have sidewalks. There are communities around us that don't have that, and I think that the people in Warrenville as a whole have benefited from that road program that we have, and that is something that's very important. Everybody always says, you know, that the Public Works does a great job, you know, plowing our streets in the summer, or in the winter, and, but at the same time, they've done an excellent job taking care of our streets all year round. And I can drive to work and get off at communities closer to the city and find potholes and everything else, and the streets in our town are 100% compared to any other place that I drive. So that is something that has been done because of the TIF and the taxes that are paid. Thank you.
Alderman Hoffman?
Yeah, I just want to clarify that for the people out, out there, that when you hear Alderman and Directors in that, talking about the City of Warrenville, they literally mean the City of Warrenville taxing district, that the Park District, the library, the fire department are not included in that statement. And I think most people think when, about the city, they, they kind of include all that as being part of it. So when the, seven, seven and a half cents a dollar or whatever, you need to also toss in the fire district, the library district, and the park district. Just, I've talked to people, and they, they generally think of Warrenville, all those districts combined, and they're not. Thank you.
I would just add a couple of observations. One, the property currently generates a minimal amount of taxes. For the next 23 years, if it wasn't developed, it would generate the same minimal amount of taxes. So the option is to develop the property, have it go from roughly $9,000 a year to $900,000 a year over 23 years, all of which, at the end of the TIF, will be redistributed to the taxing districts. So there's the possibility of this nice increase over a period of time, or the possibility of nothing over a period of time. And of course, the money that accumulates with the increment that would not have accumulated without the development does not just go to the City of Warrenville, and the City of Warrenville gets to do whatever it wants with it. That money is segregated and used to improve the TIF district, so it has a very specific purpose. So not only do the taxing districts ultimately benefit, the area that's being developed benefits because there are improvements that are made that would not have been made without the increment and the increase of taxes because of the development. So again, the City of Warrenville has multiple times used TIF, TIFs to improve the community and made significant improvements to the community. As Alderman Davalos said, is it possible for communities to misuse TIFs? Well, I guess you could go a little farther to the east, and you and you could find one that does that on a regular basis. We do not, we follow the law to the letter, and every TIF that we've had, we can list the improvements that have been made because of that TIF. So, to me, it's a very sound thing to do. Long-term, it's in the best interest of the community. Long-term, it helps, helps every one of our taxing districts. And again, if this was such a horrible thing to the districts, they've never complained yet, and they've had ample opportunity, because they know ultimately, it's a good thing for them.
Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Vavir?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Hoffman?
No.
Okay, motion carries. We'll move on then to Item 6G, may I have a motion, please? Alderman Widener?
I move to accept Planned Commission recommendation and direct the City Attorney to prepare an ordinance approving the final plat of subdivision and planned unit development plans and documents for the Lexington Trace subdivision proposed in the southwest quadrant of the Butterfield Road and Route 59 intersection.
Second.
Motion in a second, discussion? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Hoffman?
No.
Alderman Vavir?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries, welcome to Warrenville. Um, we will move on to the remainder of our agenda. We have nothing under regular agenda unless people have questions about the budget that they would like to interject at this point. Okay, we have nothing under unfinished business, nothing under new business. We do, however, have the need for a closed session this evening, so if I could have the citation, please, Alderman Berry?
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of 5 ILCS 120 slash 2, C, P, 1, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity.
Second. Excuse me, uh, seconded by Alderman Vavir, may I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Hoffman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Vavir?
Aye.
Thank you Emily, we will not be conducting any business after our executive session, so you are free to go about your personal business. Thank you for your attention this evening.